Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right, at six o'clock, I call this meeting to order. We do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Udveig.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
He's not here today.
He's absent tonight.
Oh, councilmember Mewbauer.
Here.
Mayor Feldman.
Here.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that move.
All right, Councilor Bauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Right, Councilor Udveig makes a second. Any discussion? If not, Diana, do roll call, I believe.
Councilmember Udveig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
All right, moving on to tonight's consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mewbauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to second, but I'd like to pull at least D from the consent agenda.
Okay, all right, then, let's restate this motion now, okay?
I amend my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, why don't you do that, Joe?
I'll amend the motion to accept the consent agenda with D pulled out for discussion.
All right, thank you, Joe. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second.
All right, Councilor Bauer makes a second. For discussion, Diana, please do roll call.
Councilmember Udveig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
All right, Rob, you got the floor.
Well, I was reading over the party permit for the chamber, and I didn't want to disclose, you know, leave them out, but it seems like they've missed many of the deadlines associated with planning such an event. And I just wanted to kind of see what that looked like for other people coming to do, get a party permit if we give the chamber the ability to circumvent the 14-day and the 30-day notice to the city. So that's just my question.
Can you answer that?
I think with the cancellation of Pioneer Days, this is a special circumstance here, because this is kind of, so basically with Pioneer Days, everyone, all the vendors pulled out, and so this was kind of thrown together at the last minute as a little bit of a substitute for that. So it is kind of extenuating circumstances that I would not expect to see in the future on something like this. And it would be pretty rare that things in these deadlines would get missed.
And then, this is only good for the this year, right, 2021? I just don't want the chamber to be like, okay, this is our new way to have City Days instead of Pioneer Days type thing.
I would not expect that. I don't think, I think they're happy to throw something together, but I would not expect that to be the practice going forward.
Okay. That was all I had.
All right, well, in that case, as we get back to normal, hopefully next year, we won't be, we won't allow it anyways. So it just go back to standard policy and procedure. So, and just to clarify, while we have it out, there will be three two beer that will be served, correct?
Correct.
All right, then, do I have a motion to adopt in the consent agenda item D? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Udveig makes a second. Diana, please do a roll call.
Councilmember Udveig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
All right, moving on to meet open to the public. Do we have anyone?
That would be the time for anyone to address the city council that does not have an item on the agenda. I do not think there is anyone to address the council tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, then, moving on to item seven, public hearings. Bond refunding 2010, eight, 2013, eight, and water meter lease purchase. Let's take this one, Joe.
Yeah, so I'll give a quick intro. So as they're listed seven, eight, that was on the original packet that went out, we modified the agenda to put it all under new business, just a side note clerical issue. But, so this will be a refunding, and we do have Nick Anhut here from Ellers to walk the council through the refunding. Darcy had prepared an agenda report, and Nick provided the numbers attached to that agenda report. So I will turn it over to Nick and then Darcy after that for any questions, for presentation and any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Joe, Mr. Mayor, council members, Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates. Been advising the city on financial matters, and in discussion over the last month, we've observed very low interest costs across the board for the last year, resulting from some of the actions taken in response to the pandemic, and looking for ways that can advantage the city. There are some existing bonds outstanding on your portfolio that could be refinanced at these lower rates to unlock some savings to the city. In particular, the memo I prepared identifies three outstanding obligations. The first being a set of sewer revenue bonds issued in 2010. We anticipate that at today's low rates, net of any financing costs associated with the transaction, we could unlock about $90,000 in savings potential, reducing your debt service payments ongoing on that obligation. It's just shy of an 8% reduction in your overall costs related to that bond. There's also a set of bonds, 2013A, they've already been refinanced once, but this is the outstanding balance that's still outstanding. Net savings of 21,000, it's only about a one and a quarter percent reduction, so not as enticing, slightly marginal, but still an ability to lock in lower costs associated with that. And then, one last obligation is a 2019 water meter lease that the city entered into for its lease or its meter replacement program. That lease is carrying rates of about 3.7%. We could include within this financing a takeout option to go ahead and pay that obligation off. Net savings anticipated of about just shy of $18,000 or a 3% reduction on your ongoing debt service expense related to that lease. So in total, we're talking about about $130,000 in reduction of your debt service expense. Again, these would be net of any financing costs related to a bond issuance. Rates that are outstanding, you're paying in excess, in some cases as high as 3.7% on your existing debt. We anticipate we'd be able to, you know, more than cut that in half, get below about 1.5% on this transaction if we were putting it in the market today. So looking for some guidance from the council, whether or not you'd like us to pursue this option. We think that we could present a competitive sale of bonds where bids would be presented to the council and to be adopted in the form of a resolution at your second meeting in July. This would give us time to go out, put the necessary documentation together, solicit bids, update the city's credit rating with standard imports, and hopefully deliver some very good results, at least meeting or hopefully exceeding these estimates that we put together. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we certainly think that this is an opportunity to reduce the city's ongoing expense, and we're not anticipating the need to add any additional financing with this at this time. So a good opportunity to cut some costs as you move into your budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I really appreciate that. And we had, Nick and I had a conversation just before the work was done on this, and anytime we can reduce debt, it just goes along with our strong budgetary management thinking since we came in at 17, so I'm very much for this. And I say, I'm glad we have Ellers on board to handle our finances from 17 forward. It's paying off since the last refi in this one. So, good job, Nick. Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to one of the council members and see how they regard, react to it. Sarah, what is your comments on this?
I caught the, I caught most of Rob's discussion with Darcy. So that was helpful with this, but yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think if we can find some cost savings, that's kind of what we've been trying to do on council, so I would be in favor of of this proposal.
All right, thank you. Joe, your comments?
The only question I have, I guess, is I'm kind of curious. I'm always in favor of saving money, so there's nothing wrong with that, but Coleman or Darcy might be able to chime in here, but I know we have, and it may be a different type of bond, and that's why, but like the bonds for the water treatment facility, I believe, are coming up in 2027. I think they are finished. Is there any reason why we can't put all that together and maybe save on the remaining of that, or is it just because it's a different type of bond, or what's that, I guess? If anybody can shed some light on that for me?
Oh, I think, and maybe Nick can help me with this, but I think because they're PFA, we can't prepay those. Great, Nick?
Right, so the PFA, the state agency, is offered a subsidized rates to the city. At the time, a subsidized rate, and they do have some stringency on your ability to prepay or refinance that. They use those funds to revolve them and give other loans to other communities at subsidized rates, and so they expect that revenue stream to come in on time from your payments in order to get them out the door, to provide other loans to other communities, so they do restrict that ability.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you, Nick.
Hey, let me just say here, Joe, if you recall here, we got, you know, we, the PFA loan is a 30-year loan at 1% that we did.
Right.
That's
Those were wastewater, though, but I'm talking about the water treatment facility, the clean water.
Yeah.
That I think is coming up in 2027, if I remember right, but I was just thinking, if you could save any more money, why wouldn't you try, or why wasn't it included? But that makes a lot of sense.
Well, it's understandable how they do that, because they give you such a good rate, and then they want to make sure that that revenue comes in steady, you know, as Nick said, to put it out to other cities and all that. So it's a system that has been working really well, so we're glad we got, I'm glad we got what we got with those and that, and we're doing, we're doing with the bond seems to be a good direction. So, all right, Rob, your comments?
Darcy pretty much answered mine before. I wasn't looking at the carryover balance, so I was kind of starting new debt service load, and I was like, hold on, these numbers aren't adding up. I'm all for saving money. It looks really good. You always want to save more than you, than you have to pay to get these things refinanced. I think of them, when I look at stuff like this, just like my home, and I refinanced, I want to make sure that I'm saving a ton, because it takes a few years for you to get the
Payback?
The service payment, and then you restart saving. So you got to pay that upfront, so that's something that I was looking at in my numbers, is to make sure that we were actually getting to that, you know, $129,000 savings, and how much did it cost us? So, looks good to me.
All right, thank you. So Nick, let me ask us one question here. So we're looking at a potential savings of $130,000 after our costs to it? Okay, like that, okay.
Yeah, so the figures would be net, right? So we included basically a before and after, so you'll note that, you know, the principal balance will be a little bit higher because it has included those financing costs, but the reduction in interest is so drastic that not only does that pay for the costs associated with it, but then it also unlocks additional savings. So the 130,000 is net of any increase in cost for the financing.
Right, and that's, I guess, what Rob was alluding to, even with your home refi or whatever, you want to make sure that you at least cover your costs that come out yet, so this is doing that. So, very good. And on that, I want to entertain a motion to adopt this bond refunding, refunding, rather, 2010, eight, 2013, eight, and water meter lease purchase. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mewbauer makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Udveig makes a second. Any for discussion? If not, Diana, do a roll call, please.
She's muted.
Diana, mute.
Councilmember Udveig.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Mewbauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
Thank you very much, Nick. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Look forward to seeing you maybe in person in a month or so.
That sounds good. Thanks. All right, we're going to move on to next item. Item seven, B interim use permit, PID 063324110070. And the resolution 2021, I don't have a number for this one. Approving IUP to allow agricultural uses. Kate, that, or Beth, you're up on this one?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, this one's mine. Just a second here. Here we go. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is a request for an interim use permit on block two, lot one of the Meadows of St. Francis subdivision. The applicant is requesting to use the site for agricultural purposes, and the applicant has indicated that he'd like to use the site as an agricultural use while he markets the property for a use that's better suited to the site. So just as a reminder, an interim use permit is very similar to a conditional use permit. It allows a use on the site where it's typically not allowed, but with very specific conditions. The difference with the IUP is that it does have a specified end date. So that may be a certain number of years, or when the property is sold, or something similar to that. In this particular case, the proposed end date for the IUP is two years after permit approval, or whenever the property is sold, whichever comes first. If the property hasn't sold in two years, the applicant could choose to go through another public process to renew the permit. So the site is currently vacant. It's a flat undeveloped site, several wetlands along the eastern side. These wetlands, particularly those ones on the north side, serve as stormwater ponds in the city's system and handle drainage from the surrounding land and the surrounding infrastructure. The site is guided for commercial use in the comprehensive plan, and it's zone B2 general business. So while the site is intended for retail, service, and office-type uses, agriculture is an allowed interim use in the B2 district. The property would be allowed access off of Cree Street. If a curb cut is needed as part of this use, then the applicant would need to provide that information about the curb cuts' size and location for city staff to review prior to making that cut. So again, there are several stormwater ponds or wetlands on the site. The applicant has indicated that he will be leaving these areas untouched, and staff supports that. These wetlands do need to remain functional as part of the city system. So therefore, a suggested condition of approval is that a 25-foot vegetated buffer be established surrounding those ponds. And that could be seed or sod or native plantings, or some combination of those. Something that ensures that erosion first needs to go through the buffer before it gets to the pond. The planning commission reviewed the IUP at their meeting on May 19. Commissioners talked with the applicant about the type of agricultural use that's proposed, which is mainly a row or kind of cover crop farming. And commissioners also discussed the city's mechanism for requiring the wetland buffer to be maintained. Because that buffer would be part of a condition of approval. If there were issues, it would result in the revocation of the permit itself. So after the public hearing and discussion, commissioners unanimously recommended approval of the IUP. Council action is requested this evening. The council can choose to approve, deny, or table the request for IUP approval. So the suggested motion is on your screen. It's also on page 54, I believe, of your packets. And with that, I will stop here and answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight as well.
All right. Thank you, Beth. This property is 10.66 acres on, as you saw on the map there. The plant, the comp plant zones this area is commercial, and zoning is a B2 general business district. I think our long-term plans with 47, and the way it's been, it's been talked to with MinDOT and our long-term discussion with business and future expansion or commercial base. I am not in agreement with this at all, and I'm going to give you three points that comes from 10-6-4 general performance standards. F, item F, whenever a non-residential use is adjacent to a residential use or district, a buffer area with screening and landscaping shall be provided in compliance with chapter 20 of this ordinance. Item G, general site screening and landscaping shall be provided in compliance with chapter 20 of this ordinance. And K, which I think really goes to it, is the architectural and appearance and functional design of the building and site shall not be so dissimilar to the existing or potential buildings in area so as to cause a blightening influence. All sites, the principal and accessory structures are to have essentially the same or coordinated harmonious exterior finished materials and treatment. And I emphasize the architectural appearance and functional design of the building and site shall not be so dissimilar to the existing or potential buildings in area as to cause a blightening influence. There are townhomes that we are having built there behind this acreage right now. As you recall, in the Meadows there, that was taken over by Markham Builders, and they're selling those units. And I just wonder how these people would feel having crops growing in front of their houses. So I am for, not for this at all. I've given you my points here. I will open this up for discussion with the council members and have their input to this. And I will start with Joe Mewbauer.
Yeah, I would have to agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I don't understand, I guess, really how that would fit with the existing homes back there, given what you just stated to it. To me, that would seem to back going against it, whether or not that's a finding of fact, I guess, that's what Dave's here for, is to let us know whether or not that's a a good finding of fact, I guess. To me, I prefer to let people pretty much do with their land what they want. I think with their, with their greater vision of the city and with their St. Francis Forward Plan, I don't think it fits that at all either, but I would have to agree with you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. Sarah, I'll turn this over to you.
I pretty much echo yours and Joe's feelings.
Okay, thank you. Rob, your comments?
I'd have to agree with Joe on a little bit on the, kind of the do with your property that you want, but in the same breath, looking at that location and the amount of properties that are going in, it is the staple of what you would see if you came in from salt of 47. So it was a hard one for me to try and figure out. Is this the best look for a piece of property to sell in the future if it's used as agricultural, or is it, I'm going to use it for agriculture for the next 10, 15 years, because I don't think it's going to sell? Those are my two questions, and I don't have the answers to either one. Aside from, from shooting it down completely, I suppose, I would, I'd be more in favor to table it until we got more information on what the plan is to move forward on that piece of property. So that's kind of where I sit.
Okay. I'll let the, I'll let the and I'll leave this individual speaker, but I would just say to you that I would be more apt and open-minded to discuss a farmer's market structure, selling crops than raising crops, in my opinion. That would be more, I think, more of a better fit there. Structure, again, that would sell crops brought in from other farmers but not raised on that land. That would be my thought before I would go along with raising crops. So we'll let this gentleman have some words here. You can state your name and your address for the record, please, and then
Yes, you're referring to the property owner, I assume. I'm James Anderson, and my address is 9893 Enclave Drive in Minnetonka, Minnesota. We purchased this property about seven, eight years ago, and until just the last few weeks, nothing had occurred out here. We had advertised it nationally, got no response. We did have a party that wanted to buy it for rent, rentals, space rental units, but we talked with the city, and the city wanted it to stay commercial, so that was fine. We just dropped that one. Aside from that, we had no interest until just recently, in fact, after the planning commission meeting, we did enter into a purchase agreement on the north two acres. Now, it's one of these standard purchase agreements today. They're not what they used to be. They're binding on us as seller, but they're not binding on the purchaser. So the purchaser has about seven, eight months to investigate. They might follow through on it, they might not, but there is a possibility of selling off a couple acres for commercial, and that's what we wanted to go for, too, where we didn't buy it to farm long term. I'll explain why we have this application, and we're not a large landowner, but we do have several parcels that we do own, and we acquire land now and then, and then we sell it. We're not developers, we just hold the land as an investment. And over the years, we have come to the understanding that the best thing to do with larger parcels is to farm it. If they're not farmed, they do start to look pretty rough after a while. There are some parcels like this in St. Francis. Now, there's one north of O'Reilly's. It's starting to, well, it's starting to look like it's going back to nature. And what happens is little trees start coming. Then you can't do anything with it. You can't get equipment in there and so forth, and then after that, of course, comes a buckhorn, and we've always thought that it looks better if it's farmed. One example I can give you, Zenat Seago, we bought three acres there where the Coburn store is now sitting. And that was about the same time we bought this one. It looked pretty rough when we bought it, so we got a farmer to farm it, and I think the city was good with it. In fact, we didn't have any complaints. It looked good. One day, the Coburn's representative was driving by. He liked how it looked. They eventually bought it, and they developed it. And that's our sole purpose in making this request, to get it, we believe, looking better, but it's up to the city, of course. I mean, whatever the city wants to do is fine with us, but we think, we have to, if we're going to do something, then we have to do it now. Those trees are getting to the, the little volunteer trees are getting to the point, we won't be able to take them out in a year or two, and so anyhow, that's the nature of our application. We don't want to farm it forever. We we're in the process now of looking and doing some advertising. Again, there is getting to be more commercial interest on property, and we would like to get it looking as good as possible in order, when that happens, so that when people look at it, it looks a little more attractive. But anyhow, that's our proposal, that's our thinking on it, but whatever the city wants to do, that's fine with us.
All right, thank you. I would have some comments on that, by the way. I think that, you know, when people are looking for sites, they're looking for location, accessibility, and that type of thing, and parking. You see townhomes behind the site right now, and I'm sure, and then there could be more townhomes coming in that area or commercial business of some sort. So I think that, I think that as far as trees growing on all of that, I know as I, when I build on sites and all that, trees are there. I keep what I can, but I take down the rest, so that's not an issue. As far as the people are buying a lot based on the fact that it looks decent to buy, I mean, I think they're looking at it to see what they're going to, what the potential, the lot is for particular business and all that. I'm not familiar with the Coburns, not Seago, but I will say that there is townhomes here, and again, the Meadows went through a two-year litigation, and we now have a new builder in there, and he is selling the properties. So again, I'm still for denying this at this time here. I would, I wish you luck in selling it. I think you should promote it. I think there's a scarcity of land, as we know, today for development in this, in this market today. High demand for property and a low amount of property, so supply low and demand high, I think, is an advantage that you have. But I think I'd look more for, for something to the effect of selling it off as for, for a business area, or even, like I say, I would, I would be open-minded to entertain to the council here an idea and staff of an idea of a farmer's market where it sells crops being brought in versus crops raised on the land. So I thank you for attending the meeting, but I'm still going to go for denial on this myself. So at this particular point, is there anything that council wants to say itself before I make a motion here? Nope. Then I'm going to propose a motion here on interim use permit, PID.
Mr. Mayor, what, Sarah waving her hand there?
Oh, Sarah, okay, I'm sorry. Sarah, go ahead.
I just wanted to know if Kate could give us some insight on I just wanted to know if Kate could give us some insight on because obviously planning and zoning approved it. So I'm just wondering if she can give us some information on why they chose to approve it, just for clarity.
Mayor Council, so if there's better, I can speak to that, but you know, they heard the same presentation that you did and, and reviewed it. We did have one member that wasn't sure it was a good fit, but they, they approved it based on code. So with the, with the finding of facts and the conditions that had been presented, they, they followed along with that. So, but once it gets to council is really where the approval is. So that's why it's with you tonight.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then I'd like to, do I have a motion to, uh, on the interim, to deny the interim use permit PID number zero six three three dash two four dash eleven dash zero zero seven zero. I don't have a resolution number here, but approving the IOP for denial. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can you just add based on the findings of fact discussed here tonight?
Based on the finding of facts as Joe Coleman just stated.
That's correct. That's what we need. All right, we'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilor Mielebar makes that motion. Do I have a second? If not, I will second it myself. Barney, for discussion. Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Edvay? Councilmember Mielebar? Councilmember Bauer? Councilor, or Mayor Feldman?
Motion passes three to one. Thank you for your time. I wish you good luck in selling it and I think you'll do just very well if you promote it that way as far, and also just to let you know there are major changes coming to Highway forty seven with MinDOT in the next couple, two, three years here. That will be a benefit to you on that property. So I, I would keep in touch with us as far as the, what direction that Highway forty seven is taking. But there's going to be big changes at that curve for speed, for, for lanes and access to businesses in the area and safety, of course. So I would definitely keep in touch with us and MinDOT on that as I go forward with that. But it will be advantageous to your property in selling it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item seven C preliminary final plat approval carpenter's landing. I don't have numbers on these resolutions here on this agenda. So is there, I don't have that?
Yeah, so honorable mayor, members of the council, just real briefly on that. So what, as I was going navigating through the packet preparation process prior to Diana's onboarding here, what we found is juggling, juggling, juggling the resolution numbers and the agenda items became kind of a tedious process. And then, Mr. Mayor, like we talked about that resolution that got denied, it was pre-assigned a number. Now that's on file as a resolution with a number, but was never approved. And so standard city practice, which you'll find across other cities, is that they just give it XX and then they assign the numbers once the mayor and city clerk execute them.
Okay. All right. Well, in that case, item seven C preliminary final approval for carpenters landing resolution two thousand twenty one dash XX approving preliminary and final plat.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll take this one as well. That's not quite right. Hold on. There we go. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a request from the property owner at fifteen twenty four two thirty seventh Ave Northwest for preliminary and final plat review. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the existing lot into two parcels. There is an existing single family home on the property today, which has access on two thirty seventh with that horseshoe driveway you can see in the image. A roadway easement exists along the east side of this property that would allow for the future extension of Drake Street to two thirty seventh. So Drake is right here where my cursor is right now. So this is the preliminary plat. The lot would be split into two with the smaller lot in the northwest corner of the site and then the larger lot having the existing home. And both lots would have access off of two thirty seventh. This is the final plat. It's in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat, which is what we look for when we look at final plats. Because this is a fairly simple subdivision, staff felt comfortable bringing both the preliminary and the final plat for review at one time instead of going through multiple meetings. So the site itself is guided for rural residential use, which is intended for a large lot residential uses on individual well and septic systems. The rural residential land use category allows for a maximum density of one unit per five acres. And this site is just over ten acres in total. It's about ten point three. So having two lots on the site meets the density requirement. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This parcel is also zoned for rural residential use as far as the zoning district goes. And both lots do meet the minimum requirements for lot area and lot width as well as setbacks for the site. The property currently has access onto two thirty seventh with the horseshoe driveway that you see outlined and read there. Two thirty seventh is a county road. So the plat was submitted to Anoka County for their review. Anoka County did provide their comments and the applicant has been working with staff to comply with those. So for example, the county required a sixty foot right of way dedication for two thirty seven. So the applicant revised the plat to show that sixty feet of right of way. The county also requested that the driveway of lot two, so that northwestern lot have that driveway be moved to within thirty feet of the eastern property line. And so that driveway was also adjusted. The new driveway for lot two will be required to meet code standards for a residential driveway for the city. There is an existing easement abutting the east side of this property. So you can see that in yellow there. And this easement is intended to be used for the future extension of Drake Street. And because the two lots that we're looking at tonight have enough frontage to use two thirty seventh as their access point. At this time, there is no need to develop that road to the east as part of the plat. So the extension of Drake Street would be triggered by the subdivision of the property to the east. So this larger property here. Planning Commission discussed this application at their May meeting and held a public hearing. And the commissioners discussed the plans for the future extension of Drake Street and how those may affect this property. The planning commission also asked about the applicant's plans for developing that lot two. The applicant is intending to construct a home for his own personal use on that lot. The planning commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat. Planning Commission doesn't review final plats, so they were only looking at the preliminary plat. So city council action is requested this evening. The council can choose to approve, deny, or table the request for preliminary and final plat approval this evening. So the motion is on the screen as well as, I believe it's page sixty two of your packet. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Beth. Is the applicant here tonight by chance? No? Okay. We have had familiarity with Jethro Carpenter, the applicant, and I will refresh the council's memory on this. He did a subdivision before and in doing so dug a big hole, left it unsecured in the area for children who could have fallen in. That took us, I had to go out there, take pictures to Kate, numerous notifications to him. I would just say to you, I'm not against this split, but I would caution this gentleman that they, we have policies and codes in place and we will enforce them and tie and stop your construction if you don't abide by the codes and policies we have in place. You should have learned this from the first time. Hopefully we won't have to go through this the second time. We don't want holes in the ground not protected from kids falling in for long periods of time. I understand that you may have to do that while you're under construction, but you don't leave them for weeks and weeks where the rains come in and flood them. And they actually, if you recall, council, that, that actually looked like a pool there for quite a long time. We are lucky that nobody, we had no incidences from kids falling in, but he should have secured it better than he did. So I only caution our building department and our community development department that if this gentleman doesn't follow this, to shut him down and make him a remedy the salute, the, the situation as fast as he can. Again, I'm not against this split, but I'm not, I, I don't really have much for the way he's done business in the past and I hope he learned from the past not to do it again. Because I will be out there with pictures myself if he does that again. And I will make sure that those, that, that stop work orders are put in to stop it. There's a safe way to build something and an unsafe way to build it. And I would suggest that he do it in a safe manner according to our policies and codes. On that, I will turn it over to Rob for his comments. Rob?
My biggest concern was the access of how, you know, it was a county road. So if the county is okay with the split, to me, it's another taxpayer, basically. So they're going to split that lot and two people have to pay taxes on the same piece of land. So I'm all for it.
Okay. Joe, your comments?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Rob here on this one too. And God, I recognize the name and I didn't realize that that was the one with the hole. So I'm glad you refreshed me on that one. But yeah, I hope he, he takes the safety of the people surrounding him into consideration. Other than that, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Sarah, your comments?
No, I, I think that, you know, he's heard us loud and clear. And knows that we're not going to let him get by with it again. So I'm in favor of it.
I just want to refresh you again that, that, that hole with the water in it was at pool level and was for weeks, not just days, weeks. So I know I did one project in Ramsey where they tagged me for doing something like that and it was only overnight. So I could tell you right now as a builder, I, I definitely would caution him not to do that again. All right, and as a mayor. So on that, do I have a motion tonight to adopt the preliminary final, preliminary final of plat approval carpenter's landing resolution two thousand twenty one XX approving the preliminary final plat? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, what if it makes that motion? Do I have a second? All right, Councilor Bauer makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Edvay?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Mielebar?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye.
All right. We have the next item seventy, ordinance two eight one, second series bed and breakfast.
Mayor and council, so before you tonight is a potential first reading for a new ordinance. With the update of the zoning code, we created a permitted use that includes bed and breakfast. Those type of facilities throughout the state are typically licensed as a business. They require a fee sketch, a fee structure, an application structure, and then inspection. What I have before you tonight is a first reading. If in agreement with this ordinance of this new bed and breakfast facility license, they would be required to meet zoning requirements, have an inspection based on safety for state, county, and local code. And then we would, in the future, be creating a fee schedule update to accommodate this license as well. With that, the ordinance is before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Kate. Do we, have we had anybody come forth with a request for something like this at this time anyway?
Mayor Council, we haven't specifically for a bed and breakfast. We have for like short term rentals. So we know it, it's out there. We just haven't, because we have not permitted it, we haven't really entertained the conversation for the creation of one.
All right. I just bring that up because I think it's always a great idea to put these in place so that we are set up for it when it comes, it comes to us instead of trying to do a catch up. This way we have inspections, application fees and licenses, which is a good way to keep on top of a type of situation like this or a project like this. So I'm very much for it. I think it's a, a good step in the right direction. So once, once we, we applicant, we have, we are in place to service it properly, which is good. So that's my thought on it. Joe, I'll turn over to you for your comments.
I would just echo what you said, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Sarah, your comments?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Rob, your comments?
I would agree with what you stated.
All right, thank you. All right, Byron, okay. Now that we're done with that, I will, do I have, I like to entertain a motion for adopting ordinance two eight one, second series bed and breakfast first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mielebar makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor, what if it makes a second? Barney, for discussion. Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Edvay?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Mielebar?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, scheduling a work session. Joe?
Mayor and council, staff's just looking to schedule a work session for next week. I know Mondays have come into conflict, I believe, with school board meetings. So I don't, we might be looking to Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. I think I put some tentative topics on the agenda report for you.
Okay.
Wednesday is planning commission, so.
So Wednesday being planning commission, maybe Tuesday would be the leading candidate for a work session.
Man, I know Kevin was good with either Tuesday or Wednesday. So, um, so on that, I would say, why don't we do, um, Tuesday, the fifteenth at five thirty on Zoom? Is that agreeable with everyone? Just shake your heads. Tuesday, five thirty on Zoom. Okay, Joe?
I think that works. I don't think there's any staff conflicts. Kate, you had told me that before about the planning commission. I'm sorry. It slipped my mind, but I don't think there's any other staff conflicts for John and I think Todd and Darcy are the main presenters on this one.
All right, so no conflicts with those two presenters then?
I, I don't think so, no.
Okay. Darcy thumbs up? Okay. Okay, all right, Todd already showed that. Okay, good. All right, so on the fifteenth, and once again, five thirty on Zoom, that work session. All right, thank you, everybody. Okay. Moving on to the next thing, new business. Do we have a media open to the public rather? Do we have anyone, Joe, a second time?
I don't see anyone that's not on our team, Mr. Mayor. So I think nobody's here to address the council.
All right. Okay, let me just make this note. Okay. All right, on that, I guess the report that comes above, it would be first next, or rather, would be administrator's report.
I have no report, Your Honor.
All right, well, that makes that one easy. Okay, and I'll move on to council member reports and I'm going to start with Sarah.
Um, I attend the school board meeting last Wednesday, or last Wednesday, last Monday. And there were a few people that came to address the school board, so that's good. They are planning on having a fairly large meeting on Monday, the fourteenth. They are talking about an equity committee versus CRT, Critical Race Theory. And I know that it has been pretty publicized on Facebook. So I did contact Superintendent Geese and school board president Amy Kelly with some concerns about whether or not that building can accommodate a large number of people should they decide to show up and warn them of, of maybe not putting a time limit on the length of their consideration of visitors. Because if they have, you know, fifteen, twenty people there who want to speak, I think they should all get a chance to be heard. So I haven't heard back from them yet. And then they will also be having a work session on the twenty first for the, the board. And they're encouraging people not to come to that one, but rather go to the school board meeting. So depending on what time we get done with our meeting, I may scoot off over to the district office after our meeting and try to catch up on some stuff, but and, yeah, I guess like Joe Coleman had said, they haven't totally shut down the whole idea of the SRO. But I, I'm not overly, overly secure in the fact that they may detain us. Um but I I'm not overly overly secure in the fact that they may retain us, so that is all.
All right, thank you, Sarah, Rob.
Um I don't have much to report. Uh went to Arizona, you know, um over the last couple of weeks, very hot out there. Seems to be a fire out there now. Uh it wasn't me, um but I really don't have anything to report. It's been uh great. Um I just wanna thank police and fire. Um over this last week, I've heard a lot of alarms. Um a lot of sirens, so stay safe out there and I really appreciate the hard work that you guys are doing. And the commitment that your officers and firefighters put out um on a daily basis. I I know the feeling of having all those calls come in, one after the other, and and the sacrifice that they make. Um to their families to support our community. It is not um. How you see it, it's seen, believe me, all right? That's all I really have for my report. Thank you for emergency services.
All right, thank you, Rob. Joe, your comments?
Uh well, I attended the last two uh citizens academies. Uh I got my certificate on the fridge, so. Uh really cool uh class. I'd encourage other council members to get involved too next time they do it. Uh really hoping for more involvement from the community, and I got a couple of friends. I'm gonna try to get to to do it next time. Um it's fun, it's educational, um gives you a different perspective on things. Um they did a really good job. Um the reserves and Nate and uh the gals up front, um they all did really good, so it was really cool. The all the classes were cool. I missed the first one, so I'm not sure what happened in the first class, cause I I didn't attend that one, but the rest of them were really awesome. Like I can't thank you enough for doing that. And I'm hoping we get more public involvement with that. Um other than that, I don't think I have much else to report.
All right, thank you, Joe. Uh I wanna ask Dave, um you know, a fire, you know, for 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 how dry it is and that. Where are we with that? Cause I mean, that that's a big problem. I see there's an alert out there right now too, by the way. Um so tell us what you think.
Yep, D N R just upgraded to uh high fire risk. Um I would imagine by, if not tomorrow, Wednesday, we'll be at a red flag warning with the heat. Um the winds are increasing, as I'm sure everybody noticed today as well. Um so the the wet weather we had a few weeks ago is quickly disappeared. Um which isn't gonna be easy for us. We had a very busy spring and we obviously had a very busy weekend with the heat as well, so. Um it's gonna continue to be an interesting year. We're doing everything we can, um but the risk is certainly increasing every day.
Okay, and one more question, Dave, you know, on that that lady with the fence, uh you had said that mentioned to us that uh or by Woodhaven that uh she had uh. Uh she was building a new area. Did have you seen the completion of that? Is that all all done now or?
I have not gone over there since. I can follow up tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Hopefully, she's done what she said she would do, and if she started, I'm sure she's finished it, so let's hope so anyways. Um and I I would uh second everything Rob said about our emergency services. I I am so proud of our two uh public safety departments, our fire and our police. I mean, um the the fact that our EMS abilities with our fire department has has just gone from zero to three sixty, it's amazing to me. Fact that you both departments are saving lives, uh it's just not a matter of criminal activity or 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 fire. It's a matter of getting together and saving lives. It's it's put a whole different perspective on the ability that the city of Saint Francis had, you know? When we first came in at seventeen, those cars read progress prime possibilities. Those were just words on a card, okay? Uh but today, I could tell you, in my opinion, progress prime possibilities are words we're living up to. And all of our departments and staff and the way we work the city together with our residents, and I'm just marvel at at uh how well it's going. And uh it's been a lot of hard work in the last four years, and as I mentioned before in other meetings, it's gonna be a lot more hard work to do. But the problems we're facing are problems we are working with in a level of uh being on top of the preemptive and proactive. Was a mindset we put in here four years ago, and it's working. Um you know, I'm never gonna say that any system is perfect, but ours is working. And uh again, I I I give comment, uh you know, uh uh commend all our department heads and staff for doing the job they've done here. Uh because you could see the difference uh in it. Um I will address with council now the construction of the liquor muni. Uh we've had some difficulties here with the con- the contractor. Um I myself and and Jason, our public health director, along with our uh. Uh architect has been on top of it, and we've uh cro- we've uh corrected the 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 short, the the small errors as of today. We have a construction meeting tomorrow, and at that meeting, uh I'm going to uh uh pretty much uh uh tell them like it is. On what we expect of this project. Uh we expect to start here. We expect to see some footings, a slab and framing here very shortly. And I will, I will emphasize that them to them tomorrow, as I am at that meeting, and afterwards, we have a discussion. Um I'm very much on top of this. I want this project to go well, um and it's important that we, any project we undertake. Comes in with them, comes in budget and as and builds a quality structure. That is something um I I I am very much for. Because I've seen what's happened in the past in the city between buildings that were hodgepodge together um and done and and buildings that were purchased for more money than they should have been. Our land and and in the same same way, so I wanna show the public that we are responsible, uh budgetary thinking, uh uh council. And that we don't spend these these dollars foolishly. We spend them wisely for a good return down the road, uh very much into that. So I just wanna let you know that I am on top of this completely, and I have uh Jason with me on that, and also Miles, as I mentioned before. So we will get this thing under construction here very shortly. Uh we're right now in the midst of removing uh relocating some utilities. Once that is complete, the footings will go in, slab will go on, and a slab will be poured, and then construction will start here. Hopefully, that will start next week, so I will keep the council board on that. I'll give more information at the work session coming up next week as I get through this construction meeting tomorrow. Um any questions you have at any time, please feel free to call me on anything on that or email me. Um once again, I just want to tell everybody, uh keep up the good work and all that. You are appreciated every day. I I I wanna say it every day that I can, and I try to, so and I'm sure council does too, so uh thank you for your hard work and effort that you put in to the city. Rob, you have a comment here, I see?
Yes, um for Dave, the house on the corner of Bridge Street, have we kind of put that off? Cause I thought that was gonna be burnt on a weekday. Have we put that off because of the fire hazard? We were originally scheduled to burn on Saturday this past weekend, but due to the excessive heat. Um our vendor had contacted us late last week and suggested that we cancel based on medical direction, which I advise council up. Right now, we're looking at June nineteenth as our possible reschedule date, so we've sent out a survey to staff to make sure that we have enough available staff. Um to make sure that we can move forward on that day. So once we get that finalized, I will be sure to update council to the plans. Thank you, thank you.
And that wasn't, that wasn't an email sent to us, so um you know, and and Dave, as you just said here, I mean, of course, you know, we want safety as our first priority on any. Any so any pro- any any uh burnings like that, so if heat is still in play. I know I wouldn't wanna put on that equipment to do a fire myself, so I can only say to you, I I I think that's doing on the cold bay, uh that building.
Was very thankful that we canceled and postponed. Um we ended up still being busy on Saturday. We ended up having two fires in Melvin yesterday. Um so I got back home about midnight last night, so it it's been busy for sure.
Yeah, I think uh like I say, that building's been there for a while. If it takes a little longer to burn it down, it takes a little longer, so that's good, all right? Um on that, I would say to everybody, stay cool, uh drink a lot of liquids. Uh unfortunately, my air conditioning went out, so tonight I will be staying in my basement. Um it's amazing to me that on the hottest day, the uh one of the hottest days of the year, it goes out, but that's the way it is, and uh I will be in my basement where it's a lot cooler. Thankfully for that, uh hopefully I'll get it fixed tomorrow. Anyways, everybody stay safe, drink a lot of liquids, stay cool, and thank you for everything. If there's no, any any other business, Joe, that we have?
No further business, Your Honor.
All right, and I will adjourn this meeting on Monday, the seventh at six fifty nine. Thank you very much.
Have a good night, guys.